Call the meeting to order, please. It's seven o'clock. The eighth of January. We have a couple of people missing. I don't -- is Post coming? Jerry coming? You know?
He did not email. Said he was not attending.
Okay. All right. So we have two open spots. So we have two alternates here. So Joe, why don't you sit for Kevin? And Tom, you can sit for Jerry Post.
With pleasure.
Okay. So that gives us our appointments. Minutes of the eighteenth of December. Any comments or corrections? Bruce?
I've read the minutes, Dave. I don't find any corrections or additions to offer. I would more freely accept them the way they were submitted.
My second. Should we give an award to the secretary? All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Upstayed.
Great. That's good. Okay. The first order of business is a public hearing for Marshall Epstein. And we need a volunteer to read for the secretary. Okay. Your closest -- you looked at me.
All right. Public hearing. Application number seventeen fifty-six of Marshall Epstein, Rosedale Farms and TJ Donahue Esquire applicants for a text amendment to the definitions of the Towne-Simsbury zoning regulations regarding accessory activities in support of agricultural operations, including the baking of specialty breads and pies. Public hearing set to open today.
Okay. Can we hear from the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, TJ Donahue on behalf of the applicant of Marshall Epstein, Rosedale Farms, This matters before you. Functionally, what Rosedale -- I think you're all familiar with Rosedale Farms. It's a continuing operating farm for a hundred years. It's a beautiful focal point of Simsbury. It contains aesthetic views to the river, contains trails of the Simsbury Land Trust to the river, and contains iconic views of the mountain that we all treasure so much. Over the years, a decade ago, it partnered with the Simsbury Land Trust in a circumstance where it retired all of its farmland, so that it's -- all the development rights are retired. And it's endeavored to recreate itself as a vineyard, a venue, and to continue its vegetable businesses. It's a gem in every circumstance of the word. Functionally, what they wish is to clarify that in their existing operations, in an existing garage bay on the premises, it would like to install certain kitchen appliances so that pies and specialty breads relating to the farm produce could be baked on the premises and sold. This is consistent with about six different points in your plan -- in the planning commission and our plan of conservation development. And I'll go through them for you. Number six of the preamble says, "What do we want to protect?" And it says that we want to protect historic resources, character and ambience places, scenic views and scenic roads, and farms and farming. At page thirty-four, it talks again about special places, enhance community character, and to enhance natural resources such as the topography of Talcutt and the West Mountains and the Farming River. Again, this farm is on the river, and it has great visual access to the mountain. On page thirty-four, the plan of conservation development talks about places that have a sense of place in the town, and it's hard for anyone to drive through Simsbury without saying that Rosedale Farms is one of the essential iconic places. The actual text talks about it, includes the following words, but it also includes "the experience of farm, the sounds, livestock and tractors, the smells, freshly mowed hay, and the history associated with the site." Again, this is the place that that was written to embody. It talks about the historic districts, of which this is in one, the East Wheaton Historic District. It also talks about preservation of the farms, and this is one of the nine farms that we have in Simsbury. At page fifty-nine, your plan of conservation development says to support and preserve working farms and the availability of farmland soils. And a subcategory is to protect produce markets. And it says that Simsbury will partner and encourage the formation of cooperatives and in all manner support the purchase and sale of products from local farms. So again, and there are multiple maps in the farms, and actually, you know, the plan of conservation development, although we only access it for limited purposes at limited times, it has an excellent history of the town, it has an excellent history of the population of the town, and the fact that this was, you know, as short as fifty years ago, more than half farms in town. So functionally, what we want is that ability to install kitchen appliances so bed, bread and pies can be baked. You might say, "Why are you here?" Because we can make a good case that it is a farm, it's established as a farm, and all the activities that are allowed in the farms are established as the farm. And farm stands and farm stores are protected by Connecticut statute to be upon the premises. But -- to be upon the premises. But what happened was, when the issue came before consideration of the building department, the question was, "Can you have a kitchen to bake pies and breads on the farm?" And it's my logic and my analysis that, of course, you can. It's incidental to the farm. It falls within all the statutes. If you look at the tax laws of the state of Connecticut, they exempt pies and breads cooked on farms as part of the farm store legislation. So really, the reason we're before you is we would like to clarify that this is indeed an appropriate, pertinent use to the farm. And so your existing regulation says -- your existing definition of agricultural operations, which are allowed on farms of right, says agricultural operations are operations and activities located on land defined as a farm under these zoning regulations whose annual gross sales from agricultural products during the preceding calendar year were a thousand dollars or more. And because the question was raised, and because we don't want to get involved in all kinds of analysis or permitting, we just want this to be able to evolve and to be appropriate, we do -- we were happy to meet with your staff and talk to the town about adjusting that definition. And so we would propose that we adjust that definition by adding after a thousand dollars or more the following phrase. "Whose annual gross sales from agricultural products during the preceding calendar year were a thousand dollars or more, and which may include food preparation areas for processes which have nexus to agriculture use, including baking specialty breads, pies, and which areas are at a scale and size consistent with the existing farm operation, provided such preparation areas shall not exceed four hundred square feet." So we were asked to put that language in. The staff might have added additional language about the size of the farm. And that's what we seek. The -- by necessity, according to your regulations, if you're amending the zoning regulations, and they could have an impact on anything within five hundred feet of another town, it has to go to CROG. It did go to the Capital Area Council of Governments for their review, and they came back and gave us a clean letter which says it can be used. It went to the Economic Development Commission, or at least to Ferg Jansen, and there's a letter in your file which says that he thinks it's four-square what the town should be doing. So it's simple. Now, today, we're before you, and it's necessary, or it's appropriate, in most cases necessary for planning to give you a reference, but we won't see them till tomorrow night. So we would respectfully request that you ask any questions that you have, give us any questions you have, and that you keep this open so that we could have your -- have planning report back to you before you act on it.
The commission have questions?
I have a number of questions, but I don't want to -- I mean, well, I'll start. I'm curious. The notion that you offer at this point is that approval be given to have a kitchen. And I'm curious about how the language might limit the use of that kitchen to nothing but pies and, you know, the other language that's here, pies and baked goods specifically. And I guess my overall concern is this, TJ. I'm very much in support of doing whatever we can to encourage farming and the continuance of especially the older farms that are in Simsbury. We enjoy the fact that they're here and want to help with their continued success. My concern is partly that it seems like the notion of just pies and baked goods as an expansion of what is currently allowed just opens the sort of question about what else should we be considering? What about somebody who might want to do tacos because they're making, you know, grown vegetables on the farm? And other things? I mean, I'm not that creative. I couldn't -- but, you know, are you thinking that when the Epsteins or some other family farmer wants to go into the taco business, they should come back to the zoning commission and ask if that could be included in the text that you're proposing now? Or even, you know?
My professional opinion is that they should be able to put that in now. As, you know, town staff raised it. I think it's unfortunate that when this issue first came, they went into the town and they said, "This is what we're thinking of doing." And they said, "Well, why don't you do a full study?" So they came back with a ten-page proposal about everything that a farm could possibly be. And of course, you know, our statutes and our laws, farming is a matter of right. Farming is permitted in every zone in Simsbury as a matter of right. And there are statutes which say you can't discriminate against a farm, odors or nuisance or anything else in the state of Connecticut. It's a protected use. We come from farms, and to be trying to limit them every time that they -- instead of allowing them to evolve and grow in appropriate manner, to try to be worried about what they're doing, it just seems like a backwards way to do it. It seems like a draconian way to do it. You said, "How can you tell me what the oven's going to be used for?" There is an oven on the farm. It's part of the wine operation. They use it for durs. They've been using it. It's absolutely of right. They went in and they had the courtesy to go to your staff and say, "What about breads and pies?" And we work with staff and got a definition, but if you want to, you know, if you want to go item by item and make sure they don't have a grocery store, maybe, I mean, if the answer's no, or if that's the attitude, the commission is no, that's unfortunate.
Well, no, I'm just trying to be clear that you're not envisioning all these other issues. You're just trying to speak to the pies and baked goods that the Epsteins want to do on their farm. You're not trying to create a regulation that would anticipate others coming forward in the future?
Not at all.
With additional?
No. You know, Marshall, you know, you've known Marshall as long as I have. I mean, he's as good as his word, and that's the natural evolution that he has here, and he thinks that'll be a very good benefit to us.
Right. But there are nine farms in Simsbury. Well, that was, you know, a figure that I think you gave.
Yeah.
Nine farms in Simsbury. I don't know how many are over twenty-five acres. Do you know that? But if the twenty-five acres insertion, which you suggested town staff did, that you're not responsible for, but it's in the document that we're looking at.
It is. Town staff put that in, and I got an earlier draft than I did.
Okay.
Do you know how many farms?
No, it's a good question for the applicant.
What?
No, I was just wondering how many, like Bruce was asking how many farms.
Are there others that are over twenty-five acres?
I think what he's trying to also say is that we're trying not to write very specific wordage that only applies to a particular project or site. We've had that issue in the past where some of our verbiage has obviously been written for one specific site or issue, and it's just so specific that it's obvious. And it may be that we need to understand how this could be more general and apply to all the other farms, right?
So it comes -- the question comes from somebody who knows next to nothing about farms. I don't know why other farmers, if it's a profitable dimension of farming these days, but everywhere but in Simsbury, then I'm surprised it's only the Epsteins that might want to do it, you know? Maybe it's because there's no other farms over twenty-five acres.
I think that there's bread sold at three or four farms in Simsbury as it is today, and these are so that you could bake it on the farm as part of the farm process. I think we should be thrilled that a farm would want to have bread on the farm. I don't understand why we would be worried about putting constraints on legislation that your staff went through, and I went through, and CROG went through, and the Economic Development Commission went through, and everybody thinks it's a great idea.
Oh, it's not that we don't think it's a great idea. It's just we're just trying to write it to apply to other.
I go out of my way at times to go to Bushy Hill Richards in Granby for apples and other things in the fall, and they have some sort of a bakery going on there, and they have a little restaurant they operate. I don't know what the zoning regulations are like in Granby, but I also go up to Granville. There's a little place in Granville that does. They have a bakery in their farm. They have an ice cream operation there, too. It's wonderful. I don't know what their zoning regulations are like, but it seems to me that if we could craft something that was more global and more, not necessarily global, but more likely to answer the issues that are going to be in front of us shortly.
The issue that staff had was, the issue that staff had was that they didn't want the use to get out in front of or change the scope and activity and uses on the farm. They wanted it to be of a similar scope and scale that didn't overload anything and that fit in. And that's how we came to the parameters that we have here.
But farming practice is emerging in contemporary farming practice, I think what you were trying to say or inferring, that other farms in other communities are doing bakery items on their farm and selling them on their farm, and it's just an accepted part of the farming operation. And I'm not disputing that. I'm just curious as to, you know, how widespread it is, and if it's more certain than that, if Avon, Canton, Farmington, Granby, if they all have regulations that deal with bakeries on their farms, then we ought to have it, too, for sure. But even if, I don't know that that's a standard. I'm just interested in whether, you know, there's an answer out there for us, something that has broader language in it that could answer some of the issues that are about to come forward, endorse what was presented.
Any other -- move on. Other questions?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm interested in two parts of this language here. One of them is where it says, "which have nexus to agricultural use," not on what that means, "including baking specialty breads and pies." And I'm just wondering if that really means "including but not limited to." Because if it does actually mean "including but not limited to specialty breads and pies," that would open up the possibility for the preparation of other similar products. And I would say it might make sense to broaden this a little bit so that it isn't limited just to these baking products, because there could be other products that would have nexus to agricultural use that could be covered by this regulation. That's question number one, or comment number one. Question number one is in the last line of this, "shall not exceed four hundred square feet." And again, four hundred square feet isn't much space. And I am just wondering why we would want to limit a revenue-producing activity by maybe squeezing it into a space that is limiting. And I'm just wondering, why four hundred? How was that number developed? And it seems to me a larger number might make a little more sense.
I agree with your premises that this is a good and important thing for farms. We work with staff to get language that would work for this farm and for appropriate other farms in town. Certainly, there shouldn't be a restraint. I mean, I can't imagine a reason why you wouldn't let somebody bake pies and cakes as part of a farm. The four hundred feet comes from the fact that it's the size of the existing garage bay that's physically there. There'll be no new construction on the premises. This was tailored to fit an existing garage bay that's there that they're going to use for that purpose.
Well, then that limits anybody else that might come along with this regulation.
It's my position that I don't -- I'm not sure. It's helpful to clarify it because it lets town, who's raised the issue, accept it and put a standard out there. I'm not sure that you can limit a farm. I'm not sure that anything about this is, I mean, the statutes say that farming is of right, farming is protected. Our statutes say that a farm can exist as of right in any zone. What Rosedale's doing there exists as of right. Town asked us to clarify that as part of getting a building permit to build a farm, and that's why we did it, and that's why we're here.
I would only say to my colleagues on the zoning commission that there are two significant limitations in this language.
One of the things we have to watch out for is that this has been noticed in the public and the language has been distributed in public, and the changes that we make can't be substantive, or it has to go through the process again. So we can have questions about things, but we have to be careful in our suggestions about what should be done. And so we have to be careful in making suggestions about changing the note, square feet, for example. I don't understand. There should be a, there's a reason for the order in square feet you asked, and the answer is, "It's a specific site."
But this is a regulation.
That troubles me.
This is a site-specific regulation, then, and I'm just, we'll raise the question. Should a regulation be written to be site-specific, or should it be written to cover other important possibilities? And there are two big limitations in this language.
Well, we, I think we're all saying the same thing. I think perhaps it would be useful unless somebody answers another direction.
I just have one more question, and it comes up, it's kind of in the same direction. I don't see any requirement or indication that it's going to limit the pie baking operation to materials and items that are grown or produced on the farm. That I'm not necessarily speaking about Epsteins. I'm speaking about the language that we're asked to approve doesn't limit the farmer from going into Hartford to the, you know, buying co-ops or the farmer's markets and buy bushels of apples and go back there and make apple pies. We all think we're going to be helping the farmer with the apple orchard, but that does not limit it to the apple orchard in Simsbury. This stuff could be coming from anywhere. The way it's written now, there's no limit as to where these items can come from.
Right. But that's an almost impossible thing to enforce and regulate. For example, Don Tuller's ice cream, he can't use his own milk because it hasn't been pasteurized. So he has to buy milk to make ice cream on the farm.
How does he do that? Does he, should he be referenced in this?
He actually--
Making ice cream?
Mike?
Just to clarify, Tall Metal Farms is actually zoned commercial.
Right.
This is zoned residential, so it's kind of apples and oranges, the two sites.
And that's one of the concerns with the size of the kitchen and things like that, is we've had requests for catering and all that kind of stuff at farms before where the traffic was a concern because it is in a residential area and things like that. So that would be another question I would have as to how that would be limited. I mean, I'm all for this, but how do you limit the activity level that might come from what you can produce with a four hundred square foot kitchen area? Just as a thought.
Okay. What I was going to suggest is perhaps the, do you have any comment?
If anything, if you feel that any question that you've asked isn't answered or adequately responded to, I'll take another shot at it. But other than that, I think you understand it. I think you understand the value of Rosedale, the Simsbury. I think that you know, that you absolutely should encourage them and not discourage them in any way. When somebody gets involved and spends hundreds of dollars with your staff working around, I think that you guys are great, you do a terrific job, but over wordsmithing something like this, I'm not sure that's in the best interest of this community. I think that the Rosedale farm should be encouraged in everything that it can possibly do.
Okay. I think it would be appropriate for us to let the public make their statements, and maybe that would help someone better understand. Anybody wishing to speak to it, Nord?
I just, we can't.
Yeah. If you're going to speak, you'll have to go to the mic, just because, otherwise Simsbury Community Television, unfortunately, because we're not in the main meeting room.
That's okay.
Nord Christensen, formerly of Flaming Farm years ago. Speaking from that perspective, it sounds like part of what I heard, I'm sorry, I don't know this gentleman's name, the limiting of breads and pies, I would think they would want the scope to include relishes, jams, jellies, those types of things, anything else they could produce from anything that they grow on the farm. I also think that limiting it to four hundred square feet, although in this instance may be perfectly reasonable, that limiting it to, say, a larger operation, they may want a thousand or a two thousand square foot place, or need it to produce the volume that they want to crank out. So I think you guys need to write this very generally, in my opinion, to make sure that it doesn't limit them too much, so that they can take anything that they produce and turn it into a higher-end, higher-dollar volume product.
That's all. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak?
My name's Bob Dugay, and I live on Knott Brook Drive. And maybe I'm misunderstanding things, but I think that Mr. Donahue here doesn't understand that I feel that the board is very supportive of this regulation, and that Mrs. Bynstein is right on the button, as was Mr. Christensen, but don't limit this to a specific site. Frankly, think of it, four hundred square feet. I don't have the biggest house in Simsbury, I'll guarantee you. I have a less than three thousand square foot house. In my kitchen, if I'm not mistaken, with an eating area, is more than four hundred square feet. I was a businessman in food. I was around a lot of food people. If you have a gurney with bread on it, you've just taken up twenty square feet of space, and then you have to move it around. I'll also say that you're limiting yourself because the best thing in the world happens is that you're selling more frigging pies on a Labor Day weekend than you can handle, and you don't know what to do for space. And sometimes space can be just so valuable. Don't limit, I hope they have two bays. Let's make it eight hundred feet. Four hundred feet's nothing for a commercial operation, and I hope that you do well. What happens frankly, and I agree with, I think, Mr. Frank here, we all want revenue. Why wouldn't you want to be selling ice cream? Do you sell ice cream now? That's a farm? Tuller does. I'll be damned if there aren't twenty people there you go by on an August night, July night, and you'll see twenty, thirty people sitting around on some hales of hay. And so don't limit yourself. And I think that certainly this board does limit itself too often to a site-specific type of language. Let's be a little bit more liberal, small L, and let's give Mr. Cohen and Rosedale Farms more chance to grow and sell other stuff. Do we want a restaurant there? No. Do we want a company farm type of place? No. Do we want him to sell a lot of things that are allied with bread and pies? Yes. And I wish them well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley?
What do you need? Ashley Lane. I've been around here quite a while, and I'm a friend of quite a few of the farmers. I spoke to several of the farmers, and they took note of the fact that this farm had had a previous application for a text amendment a couple of years ago, 2016. The nature of that text amendment was description of large-scale operation, including some of the wine-making operation, was very specific. of the wine-making operation, was very specific to the, what's the name of the farm?
Rosedale.
Rosedale Farms. Turns out that that application was not approved, but at the same time, it had a text in it that said 25 contiguous acres. Now, that's something that the farmers said, well, we want to do this too. We don't want to be limited. So the contiguous was a problem for some of the larger farms. Now, it turns out that there's more than 10 farms in this town, probably about 15 active farms, and they're less than 10 acres, but they are out there. Now, there are about nine farms in the town brochure that are quite, quite large and substantial, probably more than 25 acres, most of them. Now, next thing, as I went to Town Hall and I looked over the application here, I noticed that there was a change in this particular application, that at first, as proposed, it didn't have the 25 acres. I was told by the secretary that that change was specifically requested by Mr. Donahue's office. She showed me some text or email where it came from his office to change it to 25 acres. So at the very least, I think the other farmers that I spoke with would like to have that 25-acre restriction removed, and I don't know what the justification is, there's none, absolutely none. I can't think of what it would be. Who has an answer? Has that been explained?
Sorry, we're not, it's not, it's an opportunity for you to speak to the application.
Oh, I speak to the application, okay.
You can't inquire of staff, please.
Okay, anyway.
We don't know.
It's been explained-
We're learning.
-as part of the applicant's, that staff made that change, that's all. I don't know what reason it's in there. The farmers I spoke with would like it removed, and incidentally, he says he spoke with quite a few farms. Don't know who those might be, but he certainly didn't speak to a lot of them, so, anyway, the 25 acres. I also agree with the 400 square feet, well, that's a garage, that's about it. If you're going to bake pies and cakes in there, you're not going to have any place to store racks to the finished product, so I don't know how that's going to work out. So generally speaking, I think the restrictions are preventing other farms from doing something like this, and I'm all for it. Even your chairman here has campaigned in keeping the character, the rural character of Simsbury alive. I think that's a good goal, and that meets with the plan of development. I think it's a very good thing that Mr. Bruce Elliott mentioned Granby and their zoning rules on farming, which are very enlightened. Simsbury's farming rules are very restrictive, and if we had a chance to adopt Granby's rules, everything would be very nice for the farmers. This, I think, is not very well thought out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Anyone else in the public speak, want to speak to this? DJ, you have something more to-
A quick comment. In answer to Mr. Lane's question, everyone here really agrees about the functional use that's aspired to. Farming's a cyclic business. In 2016, Marshall did try to get this, and he got all bollocked up in long arguments about a lot of texts and a lot of red herrings. He's hopeful that this commission will move forward. First of all, they will stand forward and assist in any other changes you want to make to it. The 25 acres, first of all, I did not speak, I talked to several other farmers, but I never made any statement that I talked to farmers, all the farmers. Number two, the 25 acres, Town Staff and I worked on this, and Town Staff said to me there has to be some limiting criteria, or every five-acre farm could have this type of a use, and the commission will be looking for that. Now, the commission might not be looking for that, but I thought that was a reasonable dialogue with Town Staff, and that's how the 25 acres came forward, and we have no, we'd be pleased if anything that's considered a farm could have this application to it. I mean, we're permissively for the farms, we're not trying to restrict, we're not looking for negative aspects of this at any point. So Rosedale Farm wants to be able to do some pies and some breads in a 400, defined 400-square-foot space on their farm which exists. They've started to prepare that on the hope that they'll get permits so that they can open it and have that function going on this spring and summer. That's why we're here, that's why we got engaged with staff, that's why we're trying to do it as a clarification rather than to have any kind of litigation or other study of what your rights are there as a farm. But this is unfortunate, because everyone here is in agreement that Rosedale Farms is a huge asset to this community, and they are, and what they do there is amazing every day, and they hire our kids, and they put out products, and we're tilting it windmills here. But we would agree to any modification of the language, some people pointed out, and it's true, you know, we're through CROG with this recommendation, it was sent out, it's through them, we've got to go back through CROG, maybe you need another application, maybe another $500, $700, putting on the farm or trying to get a permit. We really are just trying to do it the right way. We went through staff, we tried to get this done, and with respect to the infirmities of the language, I'd be happy to take responsibility for them. We did the best we could, trying to design a camel horse by committee, but we did what we did, we have it there. It will, in the opinion of the Town Staff, put us in a position where we can put this function going forward in the summer. We will support any changes to the regulation that you want, or the definition, and we will support any work you want to do on this. But if it's going to delay a year or two, it's unfortunate. We'll be back for your continued public hearing, if we're welcome.
Thank you. Comments from the-
Having watched the SCTV video of the planning commission meeting on November 28th, where they had an initial discussion of this application, and continued into January 9th, I think that there are a number of things that they covered that we're kind of going over the same ground.
We're not struggling with the same.
And I think it would be very helpful if we were to continue this hearing to our next meeting, and, you know, have the benefit of some input from the planning commission, as they've given a lot of thought to the issues of farming and preservation, and they're really on top of some of the same things that I said that were-
Let's have a motion to continue until February 5th. Is that the date? Yes, next meeting is February 5th.
So moved?
In a second. I'd like to make one comment. I think that the numbers in this application, and even the specific product, all of them could be generalized in some way, would improve the competitive environment as well. We're kind of excluding people, these numbers not encouraging competition.
This is spot zoning.
Spot zoning.
Well, I would also raise the issue of, I know in years past, the zoning commission has taken the position that we evaluate and make decisions on text amendments as they were submitted.
Correct.
It's not a debating process, it's not an editing process, it's not a community, you know, everybody pitch in, it's you accept or reject as it was submitted. I'm not suggesting that we make a decision tonight, but obviously, we are feeling the, you know, the uncertainties that emerge if you get into, well, okay, this is a draft of a document, now the commission can go work on something that's acceptable to the applicant. I'm not sure where we're going to end up, but I vote in favor of holding off, continuing this public hearing until next week.
Paul in favor?
I agree.
Thank you. We'll continue it. The planning commission can take our comments, our advisement. Okay, next thing is a public hearing, application 1757 for a special exception for a accessory dwelling unit. Would you be so kind as to-
Application 1757 of Eric Michaud and Giles Michaud, owners for a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section C.9 of the Simsbury zoning regulations, for the addition of an accessory dwelling unit to the existing residence on the property located in 84 Winthrop Street, Terrifield, accessors map J04, Block 219, Lot 005A, Zone R25. Public hearing set to open today.
Okay. Is there someone here for the applicant?
Yes, Chair, I have some additional materials for the record that you're thinking, Mr. Glidden.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is William Tracy, I'm from 43 Bellevue Avenue in Bristol, I'm an attorney, and I represent the applicant. This evening, we have submitted for the record the original of the sign affidavit for the posting of the notice, and the original of the owner occupancy affidavit, those were things that were noted in Mr. Glidden's report. Mr. Michaud had also submitted some photographs showing the building and the driveway, the parking area. What I've just submitted, two things from your GIS services, one is a zoning map centered around this particular property, and I expanded that to include the greater area of Terrifield, because I think that might be helpful in your deliberations. The application is for an accessory apartment at property at 84 Winthrop Street in Terrifield. It sits on the corner of Winthrop and Wood Duck Lane, so it's bounded on two sides by streets. Across from Winthrop Street, there's an island actually between Winthrop and Elm where they separate, and single-family houses across from that. Across Wood Duck Lane are the St. Bernards and the Terrifield cemeteries. On the other side, there is a single-family house at 159 Terrifield Road, and in the back is the planned development of Governor's Bridge. This particular lot is Zoned R25, but I've given you the zoning map from the GIS showing that on three sides of it, there are R15 zones, and in the rear, of course, is the RD zone, which was the Governor's Bridge planned development. Parcel is about three-quarters of an acre in size, it currently has a single-family house on it, the house was constructed about 1920, and their, Michaud's bought it just this past September. When they purchased it, they found that there was an existing accessory apartment in the building, and their record search and their due diligence with the town failed to turn up any kind of approval for that. They found a building permit from 1984 that talked about changes to the garage, in addition to the garage, perhaps that's when it happened, we really don't know. The property had changed hands in 2004, it went through a foreclosure in 2017, and the current owners purchased it from Fannie Mae past September, so the house at the time was in need of some repair, some remodeling, some general fix-up, this is often the case when you buy something out of a foreclosure. And so they obtained the building permits necessary for that work, and one of the first things they did was to remove the kitchen from the accessory apartment, so that the building would become compliant to the zone. But now they're back before you to go through the process the right way, to try to get this special exception, to have that space above the garage turned into an accessory apartment. Eric Michaud, one of the owners, is currently living in the house, and what he would like to do is have this accessory apartment so that his mother can move into the adjacent It's not really an after-the-fact kind of application, even though this apartment did exist before, if it was a violation, it was cured when the kitchen was removed, so that the applicant comes before you with a compliant building and is seeking the special exception to put in the use in the future if the exception is granted. It's not trying to get approval for something that's already existed. That's been undone. It was there once, but it's not there now. The regulation which addresses this is Article 7, Section C.9, and it provides for these accessory units in any single-family dwelling in any residential zone, provided certain criteria are met. And we think that the applicant has met all of the individual review criteria, I'll go through those quickly. First, that it must be in conformance with the applicable zoning requirements. As I stated, they brought the building into compliance before making this application. It is a single-family house at the moment, and they're asking for the additional use. The accessory unit has a maximum size, it can't exceed 1,000 square feet, and it can't exceed two-thirds of the gross habitable floor area. The proposed accessory unit would be 642 square feet, so it's under the maximum. The assessor's card shows 2,257 square feet, and so that's a ratio of about 28%, well underneath the maximum that is allowed in the regulation. You require that the owner of the property reside in either the main or the accessory unit. Eric Michaud resides currently in the main unit, he's given you the affidavit required under the regulation to show that he intends to continue that, and he's asking to have this accessory, so that, again, he'd like his mother to be able to move into the accessory The two units, the main and the accessory, are required to have separate entrances, and that's accomplished in this building. There is a separate entrance to the space above the garage, leads into a common hallway that separates then, a door that would go into the main unit, and then there's a small flight of stairs to a door that leads solely to the accessory unit. So it meets that criteria. The regulation's not looking for any additional driveway on account of the accessory unit. None is proposed here. The use of the existing driveway will be adequate. Required to have at least one off-street parking spot. There's a sketch in the application that was submitted, and there were photographs that show that there's a fairly substantial driveway here, there are two bays to the garage, one could be dedicated to this unit. At one point, there may have been a third bay that was closed in. Mr. Michaud has turned that into a laundry area, but there is parking available in front of that that doesn't interfere with the other two bays, and there's also room beyond the turnaround for an additional car. So there's plenty of parking on-site. You require compliance with the existing codes, and so that was done. Michaud's pulled the building permits that were necessary for the fix-up work that they've done, and if this application is approved, they'll take out the necessary permits from the building official to complete the work that would be needed to turn this space into an accessory apartment, the kitchen, the plumbing, that sort of thing. It's served by public water and sewer, so that criteria is met. There are also some standards in your regulation, and let me go down through those one by one. We have to address the need for the proposed use in the present location. There's a fairly well-documented need for diversity in housing choices, not only in the preamble to this regulation, in your zoning regulations, but also in your plan of conservation and development. of conservation and development, both the 2017 one and the prior 2007 plan. In fact, on page 90, one of the sections specifically calls for granting accessory apartment units, owner-occupied dwellings, according to standards that will protect the neighborhood. We have to address the existing and future character of the neighborhood. This parcel is in the Terrifield section. The predominant zone in that is an R15. It's a more dense, developed area. It's an area of mixed use. The, at 55 Elm Street, which is about 750 or 800 feet down the street, there is the Willow Arms Apartments. Property is within 900 feet of the Terrifield Firehouse. In fact, there's a fire hydrant right at the end of this driveway. And we looked around the neighborhood and along Maple Street and on Winthrop and Elm, farther down towards the village, there are other two-family or multifamily structures in the mix of housing in that area. So we don't think that having an accessory unit in this particular house is going to be detrimental in any way. The regulation talks about addressing the location of the main and the accessory buildings in relation to one another. Well, in this property, there's just the main building. The accessory unit is going to be contained within the same building as the main unit. No exterior improvements or alterations are being proposed. The structure is, you might say, a farmhouse-style structure. It's a single-family house with two stories over part of it. It's somewhat larger than some of the surrounding houses, but it's also somewhat older. It was probably there before many of the other houses were built. No increase in size of the building is proposed. This space already exists. It's a matter of converting it from bedroom space, which it is now, to a different apartment. The driveway has direct street access and as I discussed, it's significant enough that it will be able to handle the necessary parking. We don't anticipate any difficulties with traffic circulation on the site and no additional traffic load on the neighboring streets other than what you would see in a single-family house without an accessory unit. For example, given the size of the family and the age of the occupants, you may have the same number of cars as they would have with his mother living in the accessory apartment. If his mother moved in and there was no separate kitchen, but they shared space, you still have the same number of cars. We don't think the one or two extras are going to be a burden in the neighborhood. Another criteria is the availability of water, adequate disposal of sewage, as I said, public water, public sewer, and stormwater discharge. Again, there are no external alterations proposed. The building coverage is about 8 percent of the total lot with the driveway that increases to maybe a little under 14 percent. So there's adequate room on this lot for the stormwater coming off the house and coming off the driveway to be handled on the lot. The next one is location and type of display signs, lighting, loading zone. The only signage that's going to be here is the number on the mailbox. No loading zones. There will be some exterior lighting that's typical to any single-family house. The landscaping is something I'd like to address. There is a long Winthrop Street frontage, an existing tree line, and in the summertime it gets rather thick. There's a landscape buffer along the sidewalk on Wood Duck Lane and in the rear and on the other side, there's quite a bit of tree coverage there that screens this particular house from views almost all the way around. So that the activity within the site is fairly private from the neighborhood. Because there are no exterior alterations, we don't think that there is going to be any need for additional safeguards to the neighborhood. We don't think there's going to be any real impact because from the street, it's going to appear as a single-family house as it does now. There should be no real change in the appearance, nothing to indicate to a passerby or to a neighbor that there's a secondary use in the building that there isn't now. So we think the applicant qualifies for the apartment under your regulation and we would ask you to approve it. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. I just want to be clear about something. As you've stated, there is a requirement that we have a separate entrance for the accessory dwelling unit in the main residence. And I just want to see if I've got this right. I had great difficulty with the drawings that were initially submitted and the photographs and your commentary are a great assistance. But there's a photograph of a doorway with a light on there, evening photographs. It's a little protected roof, there's a deck, and I don't think that photograph happens to be numbered, but what number is that?
Exhibit 32.
Could you hold that up so our speaker can see it? Number 32, it's in the newer material. I just wonder if what you're describing is that is the door that enters via staircase that enters the...
No, I don't think that's the one you should be looking at.
Exhibit 29.
The one that's on the other side, garage doors. 28 doors, the separate.
Mine aren't numbered, but if we're, what we're looking at is, there are two ways that you could access this. I'm sorry, mine aren't numbered, given to me by Mr. Michaud this evening, but there's one that shows the two garage doors and a separate door.
That's our 28.
Okay. And so that...
Thank you. Yes, I'm satisfied. Glad to come up.
All right, thank you. The other thing that I did want to mention, I failed to mention, is I submitted this evening a number of letters of support from neighbors. Mr. Michaud had an opportunity to go knock on doors of his neighbors and describe what he was about and he got some signatures from some of the surrounding owners that don't support his application. And so they're part of your record.
And we have 10 of them.
Yes.
Do you want me to pass them around?
I'll just, for the commission's record, you have a letter of support from the owner of 20 Elm Street, 73 Elm Street, 159 Terrifield Road. It's Cindy Mitchell. I couldn't read the names on the first two, I apologize. John Durkin at 74 Elm Street, Robert Egley at 75 Winthrop Street, Joan Nagy at 71 Winthrop Street, Victoria Williams at 8B Winthrop Street. I can't read the name on this, it's at 75 Elm Street, Mary Margaret at 73 Elm Street, and Thomas Mitchell at 171 59 Terrifield Road. This is basically all the immediate neighbors. And it's a form letter that basically says, "Dear Commissioners, I am aware of the application being made by Mr. Michaud for an accessory dwelling unit to be located at the house at 84 Winthrop Street. I support the application. I believe the proposed accessory dwelling unit will not have an adverse of impact on the traffic or general character of the neighborhood. I believe that the proposal is consistent with the goals of the Housing Section, the Town's Plan of Conservation and Development, calling for a variety of housing opportunities for all segments of the population while at the same time preserving the appearance and general character of the Town's neighborhood. I urge you to grant the application."
Thank you, Mike.
Sure.
Questions, comments?
The others?
Tom?
I just want a question. What is the current use of the space at this time?
Currently, there are two rooms. It could be bedrooms, there's an open area, and there's a full bath. And so it's additional space in the house, above the garage.
And is it in use at the moment or no?
It is, as occupied space, but not as a separate unit.
Thank you.
Tom?
Not yet.
Okay, let's ask the members of the public who want to speak to this application.
Again, my name is Bob Dugay. I live on Nodbrook Drive and I am in support of housing of all types, according, I guess, with our plan of conservation and development, for all types of people, and I believe in that. I am against rental units spread throughout the town willy-nilly. To some degree, I'm not quite sure why the application is here, to formalize something when if my mother wanted to come and live with me, I have every right. I may not be able to charge her rent, a formal rent, but my mother can live with me. So why we're formalizing this, I'm reluctant to speak against the application. I wish everybody well, particularly since they're nice French Canadians. But besides that fact, excuse me, besides that fact, I am against this board authorizing rental units throughout the town. Now, I'm not sure if the applicants are willing to accept the restriction that as long as their mother living there, that she could live there, and I guess we formalize it through a vote here. But the word, because our, because the board's not doing anything to improve the language, the horrible language in our zoning commission, where if we appoint, if we approve this application tonight, Mrs. Michaud, I guess that's her name, can move out tomorrow, go to Florida with everybody else, and we're renting it to a third party. This happened in my neighborhood, directly adjacent to my home. The people who were living in the, on premises at that point in time, were parking on the grass. The gentleman here didn't say whether this parking area is impurious. I mean, I want it paved, and I'm not sure it is paved. Maybe it's gravel anyway, I'm not quite sure. But we don't want people parking on grass. We don't want people parking in the woods. We don't want people parking in their front or backyards. We want proper homes. Now, apparently practically every neighbor, and I can well imagine, I've seen the site, it's surrounded by cemeteries and, you know, certain other, you know, roads and such. There's a green in front, small green. But we don't want, all I can say is we don't want rental units willy-nilly throughout the house depreciating other people's property. If, I felt that my property and most of my neighbors felt that my property would have been diminished in value.
Please stick to the...
I'm sticking to the application. I'm speaking to ADUs. We have a, we have a regulation here, Mr. Ryan, which doesn't distinguish between mothers-in-law, migratory workers, rentals, people working on the property. It's horrible and this board's doing nothing about it. We need new leadership. So while I wish to me shows well, and in this case, most, practically all of their neighbors are supportive of them, I wish them all well. But what this town doesn't need are rental units spread throughout the town diminishing our real estate values. We need to do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this application? Okay. Commissioners, any further questions of the applicant?
I'd just like to extend that question about the current parts. I'd just like to extend my original question about the use, the current use of the property. How is, how is this, this space being used now specifically? Is somebody living in it? What's going on with that space? Is it only the family in the house or the rest of the house?
No, Mr. Michaud is living in the house.
There's no one else living in the house?
With his family. And this is just extra space above the garage at the moment. It lends itself quite well to the accessory apartment. And to the gentleman's point, the difference being that if it is going to be an independent living quarter with a kitchen and bath, and then it does require the special exception. If it does not have the kitchen, it's not independent, those things are shared in the main house, then it's just another bedroom and it's a use of right.
Thank you.
And you said there was no building permit that ever showed the work that generated this extra space?
We weren't able to find one. The building permit from 1984 talks about the addition of a garage. We suspect that that may be when it happened. But because of the absence of one, the kitchen was removed so that there would be compliance before they started working the rest of it. And now we're going through the right motions of seeking the exception as if it was never there.
So you would effectively have to apply for a building permit then for the space to make sure it's compliant with code separation requirements?
Yes, because what, the kitchen was removed and they're going to put a new kitchen in there. A building permit will be required. The building official will also review all political, state building code, meaning the separation requirements for the garage, which is standard. It's not.
Right.
And also, I mean, the Michauds, since they were bidding on this property while it was up for sale by the bank, I mean, they've been aware of this and have, we looked at the files, tried to look for building plans associated with the building permit granted back in 84. We could not find, find anything that would show that maybe somehow in error, this was approved back in 84. There was no documentation.
But the accessory unit would trigger all that then?
It's the kitchen which triggers it for the accessory unit because you have a place where you have sanitary facilities, you have bedrooms, and you can prepare meals. So it's an independent living unit.
Above a garage.
Above the garage.
Anything more? I noticed the...
No, I would just point out that your regulation is very specific about how to qualify. And unlike some towns, it doesn't draw distinctions between family members and non-family members. I would point, say that a little closer to my home, Burlington, has adopted a regulation very similar to this, using yours as a model, with the specific idea that it's not limited to just a family member. So that's the regulation we work with and that's what they think they qualify under. And I thank you for your time.
May I close the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I make motion that we close public hearing. Application 1757.
I'd propose to close the hearing. Second. Second by Donna. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay, we close the hearing. The next item is the application 1756 of Marshall Epstein, Rosedale Farms. Recommendation is that we table that until the consideration, until the 5th of February when the public hearing will be continued.
I'll second that motion. Or you're looking for a motion?
I'm looking for a motion.
I offered that motion as you recited it, Dave. Thank you.
Second by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. No, Kerry's. Okay, application 1757 of Eric Michaud and Jill Michaud, owners for special exception. We just heard all the discussion of the application. Are we prepared to act on this?
Well, did the, this was on the agenda for the DRB earlier today.
No, DRB does not-
Oh, excuse me. Okay. I was confused with the other.
Yeah. Yeah. Ready to-
I don't have any questions or additional comments. I think that we covered it pretty well.
We have everything at this point, right? We have the owner occupancy affidavit and-
Yes, they provided the original copies of the owner affidavit for owner occupying and the sign affidavit. I revised my staff report for you today, Exhibit 34. There's a draft motion if you find that they have demonstrated compliance with just three conditions. One is that an administrative zoning permit is required.
Okay.
Any change in ownership requires submission of owner verification as noted in the zoning regulations to be submitted to the planning department.
Mike, just a second. We only got this far.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Donna, you prepared to-
Oh, make a motion?
No, you're prepared to act on this tonight?
Oh, yes.
Tom?
I just want to ask a question. I'm being, I'm not real familiar with the, with the regulation as it exists. I just want to clarify. If this is approved, does that mean that anybody can occupy that, that apartment, basically?
That's our regulation.
Makes no distinction between family members-
No, the owner then has to occupy-
The owner has to stay in the house.
One or the other property, one or the other has to be occupied by the owner.
So this essentially, we would be approving a rental property, in effect?
It could be. That's our regulation.
Okay.
That was discussed, by the way. When that regulation was adopted, I was on the zoning commission, and there was a lot of discussion about that. And an important point is you can't expect somebody to put $30,000 into an in-law apartment, use it for 10 years, and then remove it. So I, you know, it was a practical thing that the zoning commission agreed at that time.
I understand. Thank you.
Joe?
Yep. Ready? Okay.
Let me just offer one for the, I, I think that, you know, it's not always easy, but we, we need to operate under the regulations that we have and not the ones we wish we had sometimes, and that maybe this is one of them. But maybe there's going to be a time when we can have another conversation about that issue, that I'm not sure what year that was, Dave, that you were on this on condition. I'm not sure if anybody else here today knows about that conversation or the merits of it, or the reasons of the merits of it.
But anyway, we'll go back.
In any case, yeah. I look for an opportunity to-
We're going to revisit this.
Revisit this thing, yeah.
There's no question about it. Mike, I interrupted you.
No, I'm sorry. I jumped the gun on that. Let me just get my staff report back out. Yeah, I just, should you determine that they have demonstrated compliance, staff prepared a motion in the affirmative, like I said, one was with three conditions, that a zoning permit be required, administrative zoning permit, any change in ownership requires submission of owner, owner verification residence as noted in the zoning regulations to be submitted by the planning, to the planning department, and approval is for valid incurrence setup of accessory apartment. Any changes or expansions of the layout of the living unit may require review and/or approval by the zoning commission. Let's just say, let, the only reason why I added that in, let's just say they wanted to convert now the bays of the garage now into an additional bedroom associated with the apartment, they would have to come back to this commission, and they'd have, we'd have to review that.
This is a two-bedroom, right?
It's a two-bedroom that's shown upstairs. Or there's, there's two, there's two rooms that could be bedrooms.
Okay. This, this layout has been submitted as part of the application.
Yeah.
Right, okay. Mike, are you prepared to make a motion?
I'm happy to make a motion, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to approve application 1757 of Eric Michaud and Giles Michaud, owners for a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section C9 of the Simsbury zoning regulations for the addition of an accessory dwelling unit to the existing residence on the property located at 84 Winthrop Street in Terrifield, Connecticut, with the special exception approval subject to the, the conditions that, Mike.
You can just, actually, you can reference my staff report dated today and the attachment A.
Okay.
Sorry.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Second by Donna. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The pass is six, nothing. Okay. You don't have to say anything. You're welcome. Certainly a title to say. Next question is application 1758 of Nord Christiansen, Site Plan Amendment, or Medo Asian, Meadow Asian. Welcome.
My name is Sheldon Crosby. I'm an architect with Lark Architects of West Hartford. Thank you very much for taking the time. Can everybody hear me? So I'm not Nord Christiansen, as you probably know. Thank you. We came before you six, eight months ago for an addition to Meadow. And what we did, and you have, I think, in your information, it's hard for me to get to the boards unless I do this.
Just unplug the microphone. Just unplug.
Six months ago, this is the existing building. We proposed adding on to our bar coming all the way out in front of the building. Does everybody know this building? Very familiar? I've got a photo of you. So in the last several months, Nord got, not Nord, Sam Lynn, the owner of Meadow, got quite a bit of pushback from his customers, disappointed that they were losing this outdoor patio, this portion of it. So Sam has asked if we could scale back the bar expansion to now come just as far as So this is Meadow, and as you can see, there's a porch coming all the way across, and it's unenclosed underneath. And then we have the patio out in front. And so what we're proposing now is to just enclose this area on the left-hand side with the same doors that are in front of the bar now. We'll leave the posts all the way across. We'll leave the roof as it is. The only addition will be at the entry, we'll pull the entry out a little bit. And we'll put a small gable over the, the entry area with some wood columns. It's going to be white. I've colored it here so that it stands out a little more clearly. Black lines on white paper look like black lines on white paper. So we do this just so that you can see. Earlier this afternoon, we went before the Architectural Review Board. They were satisfied. It's the same material palette that we showed six months ago, and without putting words in anybody's mouth, I think we got their approval.
They need a positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation. Thank you. That is the sum of the extent of this project. Anyone have any questions I could answer?
It may have come up with the DRB, but I'm just, the addition of that gable makes the sign to, for the tenant to the right, the south of that restaurant. It's called Rhino Shield, it's a roofing company.
Yes.
The sign they have is a different type. It's a sort of a banner sign that's propped down the roof. Currently, it matches the sign that's there for Meadow. And my point was just, you probably thought of this, it looks a little out of sync, but I'm not on the Design Review Board, and you probably, you're the architect, you probably thought about this already.
We have, and we've had several chats with the Design Review Board as, as well as with staff with regard to that sign. Perhaps there is another time for that discussion.
Okay. But right now, I think the, the application that you make and the design of the gable and the signage there seems very appropriate to a person.
Mike? Tom, Joe, Donna?
Okay.
Questions about it? It's really scaling down a little bit of what they did already. Staff got a report on this?
You received a report dated today, January 8th, from Jamie Rabbit concerning this application. There's just one thing, on attachment A, he references part of the regs that to waive some of the requirements for a site plan. This really, I mean, they're showing just, it's an entryway. It doesn't require a A2 survey of the entire property that illustrates, I think, if the commission agrees with staff on this, that the plans submitted are sufficient enough to grant approval. So if you agree with that, you just have to take two actions. One would grant the waiver for the site plan submission, and the other would be to approve the application.
Okay. Well, in that, those items were not part of the initial submission, Mike, and were not requested before tonight. I assumed that things like the A2 survey, there's one in the town hall, somewhere in your files already for that building.
That's correct.
And that's why it's not thought to be necessary now. So we're not talking about waiving the development of those documents. We're talking about waiving presentation of them tonight as part of this application.
Correct.
So, since you figured it out, can you make a motion?
Actually, I had the thing that Mike has-
It's expounded.
Oh. There was, oh, I thought there was an affirmative motion drafted for this too, Mike. No?
No, that's, that's all he drafted.
Okay. Well, let me just-
I could write something.
Let me, do you have a agenda right there? Okay. Yeah, good. Oh, okay. I make a motion to approve the application 1758 of Nord Christiansen, Agent EAY Properties LLC, owner for a site plan amendment, modifications to the Meadow Asian Cuisine on the property located at 532 Hoppenel Street, with a notation that we, as a commission, are waiving the full requirement of all the assorted documentation required and except under our regulations and except the submitted material is sufficient for our assurance that the application is compliant with our regulations.
Second.
No discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good job. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Well done. From the head. Okay. Just get one. There it is. We have a new application. Thank you. Thank you.
Good night.
Have a good night. We have a application 1801 on Simsbury Free Library, and it's a site plan amendment changing the stair cover on the Simsbury Free Library property. I don't think we have anyone here tonight, so I think we should table this.
We just received this application on Friday, so the staff has not fully vetted the supporting documentation. Design review looked at this application this evening. They had some concerns with, with the information that was provided. They had a hard time deciphering what materials would be used for the addition, so they wanted a little more time, and the applicant was not at the Design Review Board meeting this evening. So you have time to act on it.
I think we should table it, I think. What do you guys think? One, two, three, four? About to table this till, to the next week?
February 5th?
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Make a motion.
So moved.
Tabled by Joe. Tabled by Tom.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
You have apologized. You have one other application that's received tonight, and that is for an accessory dwelling unit at 3 Karen Lane, application 18-02. I just ask the commission to amend the agenda to include that.
Okay. Would that be the, for the purpose of setting a-
You'll have to set a public hearing date for February 5th, a month from-
Can I hear a motion to amend the agenda?
I move to amend the agenda to-
What's the application number?
New application number-
18-02.
18-02.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. Need a motion to set a public hearing for application 18-02 for a special exception for an accessory dwelling unit?
Yeah. At 3 Karen Lane.
3 Karen Lane.
So moved.
Moved by Joe Campolita. Give a second.
Second.
Second by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Set a date?
We did say, can we say the-
No, didn't we set a date?
February 5th.
Okay.
I just said so moved. I thought I had heard a date. Yes.
February 5th.
That's correct.
Setting a public hearing for this, 5th, 6th. Sorry. We voted out. Okay, it's all done. Anything further to add, Mike?
Nothing to add.
Magic words.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Chairman, make a motion. Mike made a motion to adjourn.
Seven seconds.
Joe, on the other end. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, guys.
Funding for Simsbury Community Television is provided in part by contributions from viewers like you. Thank you.